Call this Fairmont City Council regular meeting to order November 12th, 2019. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Mayorfield?
Here.
Councilor Rice?
Here.
Councilor Yan? Councilmember Kennedy?
Here.
Councilmember Bloodsow?
Here.
Councilor Grubb?
Here.
Councilmember Mason?
Here.
Councilmember Manella?
Here.
Councilmember Blood?
Here.
I'd like to make a motion to excuse Councilwoman Yan from this meeting. Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? He is excused. Okay, if you'd all stand for the prayer and the pledge of allegiance, the prayer will be Bishop Gabe Robinson. And the pledge will be Councilmember Manella.
Our dear heavenly Father, in pause for a moment, the beginning of this Fairmont City Council, to acknowledge the blessings that we have in this wonderful time upon this earth, in this country that we live in, and thy hand in making all of this possible. We are grateful for the government that we have, that allows us as a people to have representatives to hear and to represent our voices, our voices of concern and gratitude of decision-making and of resolution of differences and of problems. We are grateful for the men and women who serve on this council, and those throughout the state and in our government, our federal government, that serve with their time and talents to help bring about the desires of our hearts as a public. And we are grateful to be able to participate in this process. We ask at this time that thou wouldst bless these men and women here, that they would feel in their hearts what is best and righteous for our city.
Justice.
And for our people. Father, we acknowledge the goodness in so many people in our community, the desires to volunteer and to serve each other, the organizations, the churches, the nonprofits, and the people who individually desire to serve and to help make our city better, especially to help those that are lacking and don't have the needs, that don't have what they need to have a comfortable life and to be able to achieve the goals that they have in their hearts. We ask to bless this council and us as a people, that our hearts can be softened, that we can reconcile with each other our differences, acknowledge each other's wonderful strengths and views, and forgive each other for our individual weaknesses and differences. We ask a special blessing this evening upon those that might be cold and might not have a place to stay, or enough to eat, that the city council might lead us as a people to know what is best to help these people and at the same time help ourselves to be a better people. We ask these things humbly in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
For the reasons unified of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Bishop. Next, Don. Proof of minutes. I trust everyone's had a chance to review the minutes as they received them on their tablet. If there's no corrections or adjustments, I'd like to have a motion in a second to approve the minutes as written. Second.
Second.
All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved as written. Public hearings. Could the clerk please read the first ordinance by title?
In order to the council of the city of Fairmont, providing for and authorizing the purchase of the certain parcels of real estate situated in the city of Fairmont, Marion County, West Virginia, Part Lot 11 Monroe Street, Tax Map 0328, Parcel 115, Block H Lots 13, 14, 15, Lorier Way, Tax Map 0331, Parcel 10, Lots 31, 32 Adele Street, Tax Map 03-30, Parcel 174, Lot 22 Robinson Street, Tax Map 03-33, Parcel 145, Block 6 Lots 9 and 10 Cliff Avenue, Tax Map 03-27, Parcel 208. Our State of West Virginia Deputy Commissioner of Belafonte and Nonimmigrants has resolved the nonpayment of the real estate taxes. Congratulations.
Thank you. Anyone here to speak for the ordinance?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, staff and I support this ordinance. It's a continuation of our reduction in light through the corrupt communities that are purchasing these properties through the state's tax sale.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak for the ordinance? Anyone here to speak against the ordinance? Declare this public hearing closed. Announcements. Mr. Rice?
I would like to commend the staff to step forward their display of the white crosses on their church guard. Beautiful and humble, and certainly a sign of the sacrifice of our local people to keep this country free.
Here, Don. Don't have anything, Mayor. Thanks, sir. Do it.
One of the things I'd like to say that, as you know, I'm on the CBV Council, and one of the things that they will be doing, and I'll be meeting with them Friday, that they are going to have a section there that people can go directly to, that will be announcing our activities and what's going to be happening for the 200th birthday of the city. And so, they are going to take the lead in publicity, and we may be able to get some assistance also through them for some of the things. The other thing is that I understand it has been finalized, that the Billy Graham Crusade will be here in April.
Yes.
And it will be for three days, and it will be at Fairmont State University.
Right.
And there will also be other places that they will be having sessions for people to come to. That should be a really big draw for this city. It should be something very positive.
Mayor, I received a couple of phone calls from an individual who lives on the end of Morgantown Avenue complaining about potholes in the street that we found out that was part of the state property. And so, I shared that concern with the city manager. Valerie got ahold of the right people at the state, and lo and behold, they filled the potholes. So I thank Valerie on behalf of the gentleman who have been calling me persistently. She does carry a big stick these days, I understand. Well, I did understand, but on his behalf, I would express appreciation. That's the way government is supposed to work, in cooperation with other parts of government. And I had the pleasure this morning to usher the funeral of Mr. Jim Martin. Jim was very active in the community, in the koalas. He was elected to the first city council in this form of government. And it was an honor for me to be there. Thank you. Don?
I have a couple. Wanted to say happy birthday to Josh Rice, council member, who celebrated last week of the week in New York.
Hi, you.
And then I wanted to say congratulations to Fairmont Senior. They seem to be killing it this fall with soccer and cross-country. Football team's doing amazing. And the girls, East Fairmont Senior High School, just won regionals in cheerleading. So, congratulations to all of them. The other thing I wanted to say was, as a victim advocate at the Child Advocacy Center, our police department and the sheriff's department are both participating in No Shape for the Brave. This is our third annual campaign, and it's a fundraiser that we have, and we've already surpassed last year. So, if you see a lot of hairy policemen, tell them thank you, because it's a wonderful fundraiser, and it's kind of fun, too. That's all.
Thank you. Here.
Hi, brother.
Just a couple things. Had the pleasure of being able to read to the kids at the Head Start Out at Edgemont, and there's no question I enjoyed it much more than they did. If you ever get a chance to do that, it's just, it's a special time. Can't put it into words. The Rangery Club has all the flags up, 631. I don't know if you've seen those around town or not, but that's always good to see. I think that's it. Do we have any citizen petitions? Oh, that's good. City managers report.
I don't have any questions, Mr. Mayor.
At this time, our friends will take some time led by Dan Dwyer. I guess you're the leader, Dan.
I guess.
To tell us about the Pierpont Square development.
Well, I'm going to talk, and then Alex is going to talk, and then Ron and Alex and I will take the questions that anybody has in regard to our presentation. Let me, I want to first thank the mayor, and the city manager, and the city council for your opportunity to come before you and talk about what we intend for the green space on Hattie Street. Let me, I want to read to you what I have written here in regards to Francis Pierre Pierre.
Can't hear you. I'm talking to my...
Your caller, here you go.
How's that? You got me?
Yeah.
I'll get even closer. I'll put this up right here. I said, Alex, remember, I put this up right up to you.
All right.
Anyway, several weeks ago, I watched the ceremony in the U.S. Capitol Retundum, the death of the well-respected member of the U.S. House of Representatives, Elijah Cummings, from the state of Maryland. I could not help but admire the statues of respected persons from all 50 states. I began to remember my last visit to the Capitol, and while walking around, came upon the magnificent statue of Francis H. Pierpont, who represents the 35th state of our union, West Virginia. It's a white marble statue, and you can see what I passed out to you, a white marble statue designed by an American artist and sculpted in Italy. But as I watched the ceremony on television, I saw that directly in front of the flag-covered casket, there rested on the same pedestal, there carried the casket of Abraham Lincoln in 1865, and John F. Kennedy in 1963. The white marble statue of the father of West Virginia, Francis H. Pierpont. This statue was dedicated in 1910, 109 years ago. In the reading of the proceedings in Statuary Hall of the unveiling of that statue and the acceptance by the state of West Virginia, I was overwhelmed by the respect of this man as a scholar, a statesman, and a Christian patriot, whose life and deeds add luster to the pages of our American history. When the Order of Secession was passed by Virginia Convention in 1861, it was by no means a unanimous vote. The record shows that 88 members voted for the passage, and 55 voted no. Thirty-one of those voting no lived west of the Alleghenies. When those who voted no decided to meet in Wheeling in May of 1861, some immediately wanted to establish a new state. Pierpont took another look at Section 4 of Article 4 of the United States Constitution, and discovered that the United States shall guarantee to every state in the Union, "a republican form of government, and shall protect each of them against invasion and on application of the legislature or of the executive, when the legislature cannot be convened against domestic violence." Pierpont suggested for the organization of the restored government of Virginia, and an appeal to the government at Washington. The idea was to form a commonwealth simply based on the theory that when a sovereignty lapses by reason of treasonable alliance on the part of an existing state authority, it reverts exo facto to the loyal people of the commonwealth, and by then can be at once embodied into a provisional government. The conception and formulation of this idea belongs to the man I'm alluding to, Francis H. Pierpont. This is why we celebrate Francis H. Pierpont as the father of West Virginia. Thus, Francis H. Pierpont becomes the governor of the Commonwealth of Virginia, first in Wheeling, then Alexandria, Virginia, and finally Richmond, Virginia. Francis H. Pierpont was never governor of West Virginia. Arthur I. Borman was the first governor of West Virginia. And by the way, they were inaugurated on the same day. The vision that this park, square, or whatever name it is, should show that anything is possible. You have to endlessly explore what options you can and consider everything. You have to have the passion for a project, you have to believe in a project, and you have to believe in the benefits of this project, and how it's going to benefit and affect the community we all live in as well. I think people are more educated in history today, and I think the timing is right for this project. We have a wonderful group of people helping in this project from all walks of life, and this project could bring people in from far and wide. Our paths are determined for a reason, and there is a reason that we have endeavored on this path. If it's this or other things, I'm not sure, but this project has consumed a great deal of our time the past several times. So perhaps this is one of those reasons. Okay? Alex, come on up, and we'll show people what we have planned. And this is just a plan. This is not anything, there's nothing written in stone, there's just an idea, and which ideas can change as well.
This is a simple big push-in through the green spaces.
And I think I've lost some of my drawings, but...
Consider it.
Yeah.
That's all right. Well, they have the plan for use of it, because the city owns the land, and they're suggesting this can be done. The city would be responsible for the funding.
Essentially, this comes down to, this is the existing green space between Monroe and Cleveland, adjacent to the Huntington Bank. It is on Meredith Island Alley, where the library's located, and in front's on Adams Street. This is approx. just under one acre of land, if we look at the entire plot. I worked for Alpha Steel Shits, and many of my people that I've worked with that live here in Fairmont City came together with this plan, developed it, and said, "This is, you know, how we're looking at this particular piece of property, and how it could possibly benefit everybody." And by benefit everybody, this becomes a learning tool. Due to the features that we're putting into it, it becomes a public park setting. It creates a learning experience, different aspects that are going into it, and it's good all-around draw for people to come to. We want, you know, we want to be a city on a, as a destination, not just a stop somewhere. So, as you look at the handouts that we've given here, you will see that this is actually divided into two sections. Your upper section is your plan, your lower section is your elevation, which you are on Adams Street, looking at the park. Different things are going on here, and what we have, let me find my bullets. We have lighting that's in here, that goes around the park. It is non-night sky pollution lighting, which means that all the lighting comes down to the walking and paving surfaces. We've included things like an alarm system, like what you see on the college campuses or at the hospitals, a push button that will go off. The police station are in the security section. We have walking paths that go through here. Each side is accessible from different points. As you see, we made the next here, so that we have no visual blockage. The police can actually drive through this because of the type of road surface that we are proposing, which is also a very good walking path. Included with this is an amphitheater, which is adjacent, which is adjacent and backs up against the Huntington Bank. And in kind of that, we have some seating. So this could work during summer months, when we have the movies that are shown to the kids, we have different things going on. And, you know, it's nice, it addresses the different things. We also have flags coming up in here. They're out at the street corner of Monroe and Adams, which has actually been designated kind of as the main entrance. We have a pavilion, which is this block right here, and this is what you see at this point. It has a clock in it, since we, I think the town has lost all of its clocks here. We also have what we call a dry pond or detention pond, which is basically stormwater management. And if you're familiar with the Sheets Project, if you look behind their building, they have a detention pond. That's where all the water gathers, and it gradually filters out, and this goes back into the earth to, you know, percolate the soil. The walking surface itself is grassroots. It's basically concrete blocks with holes in it that grass grows in. So, maintenance is basically run a lawnmower over and you're done. The natural wearing of people walking through there will just wear the grass down. So it's kind of a minimal maintenance-type situation, but it still has to be looked at. We have a couple little ceilings right up at this point, which backs up against a water feature. It's not a massive water feature, but it creates that sound and that movement that makes things a lot nicer. We've also included in with this a drinking fountain, which is at this point. Now, this services the people and the guests, as well as for their animals. You know, it's got the little pond at the bottom, and step on the pedal, and, you know, it's not like we're running water. In addition to that, we've also included a, what do I want to say here? Memorial area, which is this large sheet. And this is only a concept, once again. This is actually at the Fort Pitt. This is the actual photograph of what's at the Fort Pitt Park. And we've, I've taken this concept, and we've developed it, so that it would have Mr. and Mrs. Pierpont on it, and then it would have informational panels as to what they were about, who they were, where they came from. But that, this, once again, is a concept. In addition to that, behind that, we've created a backdrop to this, which becomes a public toilet room area, and this would be for events only. This could be, this is to be a lockdown situation, where if it's not used, it's locked. Now, unless you all decide that you want to do something different, that's fine, whether it's open all the time or not. But we're looking also at security and making sure that, you know, everything works the way it's supposed to. Basically, that's the whole thing. So, do we have any questions on this?
Sir, you can put it. Dan, Alex, I've been waiting for this with anticipation, really excited about it.
Thank you.
So if we, Alex, that this is, this will be part of the signature of the new town. I'd like to ask you this, though, and it's only my opinion, that the darkness of the angles of the pavilion, the starkness of those angles, don't seem to fit. We don't have any recollection of the tremendous train station that existed here, and to change that over to circa 1890 English train canopy, like they have in Clarksburg across the street from the federal building, would fit. And putting a clock on a black post, roughly 10 or 12 feet in the air, four-foot diameter, black English clock, dual-sided, to me, that fits. And that's the only, and I'm not even going to say a negative, because I know how much work you can put into this, but this is absolutely fabulous.
Well, this building is configuration. This can change.
This is a configuration.
This is a concept, so...
But what is possible? But with all you've done, it doesn't fit. It just doesn't fit.
I mean, once again, this is only a concept, but we need to take these points that you were making and introduce them into this.
Seems very little, very little. Move this ahead, get it rolling.
Thank you.
Get it done, get the money out there.
Thank you.
Hey.
One of the reasons we came is that we know that there are grants available, but we can't apply, the committee can't apply for a grant unless we have confirmation from the city that the city is behind this 100 percent. And we have the Marion County Historical Society as our main, we're just an ad hoc committee of the Marion County Historical Society. So, they are behind this 100 percent, and from everybody whom I've talked to on the street around, they think it's a great idea, we have something downtown like this to help bring in people. One of the things that just came out of the paper that they did is that a piece of the Seven Fishes is going to be downtown in December again, and it's just right down here.
And this is the upper block.
So, this would get, this would bring people in. I mean, I know it's December, and the weather could be tenuous at that time, but if we're thinking about developing the road street down where the little fire station was, down by where the Francis Pierre Pierre Church is, then this would tie in very much with that kind of idea. And if we're behind the piece of Seven Fishes, we're going to have to lock start it.
Considering the difficulty with this potential project, it's time to kick it in the pants and get it on board, y'all.
Well, is the rendition covered, does it assume that we'll be able to require the parking lot?
At this particular time, this rendition does include the existing parking lot. Now, if that were to not happen, there is basically a visual break on the property line, where this section would be developed at a later date, if that parking lot was had. So, actually, this could be done in a two-way situation.
But there's no parking on your rendition at all?
No.
Okay. Because I was under the assumption previously that there was some. It was one mistake.
No, no. The, one of the things that we talked about in our meetings is effectively, the library is right here, and if you have children coming to the library, there's no reason why they can't come over here and sit down and have conversation, whatever, and then back and forth to the library. I mean, it would enhance all the areas here that we know of.
I also see this working also as a sculpture garden, where we could have... I also see this working also as a sculpture garden, where we could have students from Fairmont bring in their sculpture and set it in, and we could do shows and placements that would be an exhibit that could last six months or a year. And, you know, this brings in more public. So, you know, it's utilization of the space. And there was also some conversation at one time or another of Huntington Bank possibly becoming an art center. So overflow could work into this if that develops. If it doesn't, it doesn't. But I mean, there's a space here so that people can go outside, and if they do sculpture in that out there, it can carry over into this area.
Well, let me, Donna talked about the young ladies who have won these championships. And we can go back a long way. I've done a great deal of research on the sports championships in Fairmont. And I approached the county commission two years ago that we need a sports museum here in Fairmont that goes back all the way to the 1890s. And of course, that's dollars, but that's something that in the future that we can have. We have, West Fairmont just won the men's soccer, the girls just won, the East Fairmont girls just won. But there's no recognition except what's in the paper. And there's no reason why we can't incorporate in the future something of that nature for downtown Fairmont. So that's another idea, Mary, that we've talked about as well.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah.
Do you have a guess about what the cost will be?
We're at about $2.5 million. That does not include acquisition. All right? Please understand that the property is not very, it's not a good piece of land to build on. So, you know, part of that, we've got some soil remediation to do there as far as removing it and getting certain compactions, which is driving a little bit of the cost. But that's, that's just an estimate, that's the best estimate I can come up with. As we develop this, we can nail that price down further as to what do we actually have in here, what's it actually going to cost?
I would just like to say too, that I really think it's a great idea. Since that green space has been there, I used to work right across the street at the Chamber Building, and we'd look down on that empty space with our escape building this corner now and just wish that we could go sit there and.
Sure. Bigger place to go to lunch.
So I think it's a great idea. I do worry about the parking situation.
Well, I think parking in that area of town is difficult anyway. I think it is difficult. It's difficult for mothers to go to the library with the sheriff's cars parked down the street. I watched, I watched a mother the other day who tried to come up the street on Monroe Street and park her car and get her children out, and it became quite an ordeal for her because she had opened the door and it kept wanting to fly back, but she couldn't go to the other side because the sheriff's department has taken all that up. And my question is, I don't know why the sheriff's department can't park in the parking lot. I mean, they're helping, then, if you walk that far.
With that gravel lot, I think they squeeze about 75 cars a day in there. And if we take that and do something different, we have to ask the question, where do those cars go?
Now, are those, is that a paid parking lot, or is that, they just park there?
They just park there now. It used to be paid. So I mean, just saying, it's just.
Well, I agree.
It's something that we're going to, everybody's going to have to consider. Does an agreement go away?
The answer to that is angled parking. That's the answer.
Angled parking helps a lot.
You're probably able to pick up 30 to 40% of parking. And it will make that street look new.
Yes, that's what they do today in Frederick Memorial.
And we can get the bike path in there. There's a gentleman from Charleston, and his whole business is looking at towns and reconfiguring the direction of traffic.
Well, I think those are things that I think that could even be incorporated along with this, change, you know, change the entire appearance of the downtown. And so people would come on a come, and they don't have to, well, I don't think we ought to have paid parking. Because you only get to park for 25 minutes for your, whatever money you put in there. Then if you're in a store, say you go to the Arts and Antiques, and you want to go up to the museum or go up to the courthouse, you've got to feed the meter. And I think there are other ways to handle that as well. Anyway, that's another.
If I might say this more quickly, I'm wrong first of all, by the way. On Saturday, the library sale, wherever you're down here, see, I had never seen a sale with that turnout that they had Saturday. Of course, the parking lot was full, but what was so beautiful to see was people were parking on Main Street and other areas and walking in. If it's there, it's just like the festival annually, the Fish and the Seven, the Seven Fishes Festival. They will come to it in the park. They love to walk, if there's something to walk to. It's not like going into a drugstore and buying something and have to run. If you're in a relaxed environment where you want to be, you're going to walk, like one of the strip stores in Pittsburgh. You don't mind walking.
It's like going to Walmart, park three blocks away.
Good point.
Yeah, I think there's going to be a lot of discussion around this.
Yeah. Well, I think incorporating the parking issue is along with this.
Definitely need to deal with the parking.
Absolutely.
You know, those businesses that we're trying to get and one that's waiting, they need some parking too.
Yes, they do.
So.
Well, I think the city has made a great leap when they made the parking lot behind Saint, or Presbyterian Church. They made a city parking lot because I see people who work in city buildings and county buildings crossing the street to go to the cars, either in the evening, during lunchtime or in the morning. So that's, that's an option as well. I mean, there isn't very much parking, you know, there is a parking law as that is, but again, people, it is a problem.
I would also like to point out besides talking about that, and I did send Valerie several things about this, but the squares that we talk about, Parksburg has one, Morgan Town has one, so forth, these all they got through grants. They got big grants. Parksburg got a $900,000 grant from the state that is for, exactly just for this type of project. I don't know how long it'll last, but if we don't jump on it, we'll lose it.
Well, we haven't, we haven't talked to any of the House of Representatives, people or the senators.
Well, I'm just saying that there are brands there. This is the day and this is the time. I don't know how long they'll be there with the change if we don't apply for them now.
They're on water.
Another question that I have about this, that in 2018, I believe, that we did pass through the city manager, that we had already set aside $500,000 to start this project off. And I still have not heard what has happened to the money that we did go through this way. And I think we need to look at, to look at, you know, what happened to the money that was put forth that we, we, the city council, asked in the budget.
It's in the future. It's a, it's a, there's money on hold in future years, but there's nothing in this current fiscal year.
Well, I understand that, and that's what I brought up prior, I brought up last year because that had been passed and it should have been in this year's budget.
I did have an email from Robbie Goman, the former manager, to me. We emailed back and forth during that whole period that there was money set aside. Now, that was what he said. I have no way to prove that at all.
Yeah, money can only be put in the budget by this block. So the budget that was passed did not include the $500,000 in this fiscal year. But in future years, which of course have not been approved, and every year we have to go through the whole review process, there is, there is a possibility of a capital project set aside. But there has been no decision from this body of what will go on that.
Right. And I think we've made some progress because we are getting close to either getting that block or not. And, you know, that.
Well, I think that's, that's the next thing.
Well, that is the next thing. And then, Mary, the discussion about this has been put on our list at our recent strategic planning sessions. So there's progress being made. I know it takes forever, but at least we've broken inertia here.
Well, we're, the three of us and the other members of the committee are, we're aware of that, and we're available anytime for anybody that we will go and talk with them at any time, so.
So once we get that resolved, I think there's going to be some hard for council discussions take place to decide our direction.
Now, remember, this is just an idea. This is the concept. This is not, I think written in stone here.
I would also like to.
When the property is actually going to be utilized, then you sit down as a vast committee. Everybody has input. And you do a whole day signing session. So I've done, Alex has certainly done many times over at Yanomastoo. Then you can decide what you want. This is strictly a basic concept like the pavilion sitting there. I'd like to see that pavilion with a big stone fireplace on it.
I think the concept is why it made a list, is that council as a whole at least supported moving that forward for discussions and that. So, you know, it's not, it's not on board, it's just that.
Something will be done, something, they want something to be done in this green space, but.
Exactly.
We're very patient. We've been, we've been patient for years. We'll continue to be patient.
We're kind of getting there.
I would also like to point out that there's been a lot of money spent over the last three years that I have been here on council with many projects that we, not necessarily us, but somebody has paid to have presented to us for 30, 40, $50,000, and nothing goes with it. Here we have people that have donated their time. Alex would normally, if we asked him to design this for us, it would have cost us $40,000 at least, if not more than that. I'm just roughly saying, we've been, he worked with this free for all of us. So I mean, this is, this is something from people that are from this town, that know this town, that know the people of this town, and know what this town needs if we're actually going to move instead of somebody from Morgan Town telling us what we need where.
Which is why I sat down with my staff and engineers and said, you guys live here, what you're in for. And then this is what we came up with. I am available at any time, and so are my staff of engineers to come in and if you want to do a work session, we're available. We'll sit down, we'll talk, we can hash through it, whatever needs to be done.
But Sheed, Dan, you say you need a resolution from us supporting this project before you can apply for any grants.
Right, because we have no authority except for the Marion County Historical.
Was that a resolution?
I think the resolution would be.
You all apply for the grants?
Yes, yes, we'd be happy to, with the city. We're going to go through the Marion County Historical Society because of the 501(c) organization they have with the government. So rather than us applying as a group, we're just, we're going to work through the Historical Society. And we have their approval, and they're going to write a letter so we can have a copy of the letter saying that the Historical Society supports the project. So that's what we need from the city council, is a resolution that they support this and so that we can make, start making applications for grants. But there are grants out there.
Right now, we don't have a clue, all right? We need you guys behind this to move it forward, all right? And we can't move forward without your help.
Right. Got you. But it's still a big amount of money for us to come up with for the next five or six years, not knowing where we're going to get it.
Right, right.
That's kind of.
And the thing, the big, well, the big cost is this parking lot, if that's what is going to be incorporated in with that, that's a, that's a large cost. But when they, when they tore down Morgan's and the Palace Restaurant and those buildings there, they dumped all that in there. There's nothing but rubble underneath that all the way down, similar to what happened at the Trolle Market down on Monroe Street at the corner.
Couldn't build on it until you took all that out.
Yeah, take it all out, and it's in here. So that's, that's a problem with building here, that we call a.
It would cost a whole lot more to remove the encaminated dirt that's in there. By encaminate, I mean the bricks and all the rock and everything else.
Excuse me, I was going to ask you to do that, just the whole site. Well, there's no place to build it there, so that's really.
It doesn't, it doesn't pay for it.
So it's up to you guys. It's you guys make the decision, and we'll, we'll do whatever we can do to help.
I mean, right now, we're putting everything on the surface, all right? We're removing as little bit of dirt as we possibly can, you know? We're trying to be economical in developing this.
And environmental as well.
Yeah, that's a big plus. That's a, that's a biggie. Because I'm not looking at just dumping water down the source, you know? We need to percolate this back in, you know? Why are we cleaning rainwater? Why are we treating it?
You think it's really $2.5 million? Somebody watch.
Yeah, how many grants we could also.
Sounds like.
The amount of grants you get on didn't want to affect the cost. But $2.5 million.
That is, that's.
Whether it's grants, the city, you really think it's going to cost $2.5 million to do what you.
What we have right now? Yes. And to be honest with you, it's like, I would sort of give you a good surprise if I had it coming in two minutes. But, you know, it's a number. Like this is a concept, all right? So the concept has to move forward. We have to be able to nail it down closer, then we can come up with a real number, all right? This is just an estimated number based upon what we're looking at.
And you have another place for your job.
We have plumbing, we have electrical, we have dirt, we have all kinds of things involved in here. We don't know what's underneath that grass.
Last month, we had a work meeting up at the water park. Most of the department heads were there. And another one of those meetings is coming up here in the next 60 days or so. Can you guys give us a report? Could that be?
Sure.
A lot of applications have been made, if other ideas have been incorporated, and we're kicking this along. $2.5 million is like the pocket change I have in my pocket. This town is going to spend about $150 million in the next 10 years, and that's going to be the rescue of this city. When we bring back the quality we had, people are going to come here to live and spend their money. And they're not going to do that until they come here to live, and that cycle is perfect for that. We're bringing about a Morgan Town and Clark's Park now, and they just don't want to come to the old Fairmont.
Right. You're absolutely right.
Well, I think it's up to the city council to turn that around.
I agree with you.
I mean, that's.
I'll carry the flag for you.
There you go. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, folks, thanks for all your, thank you for your time.
Thank you, guys. Thanks for all your time on this.
You're welcome.
You're welcome. We're going to continue, we're never going to stop.
Yep. Okay. On the consideration of council business, is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
You have a second, Senator? Consideration of the ordinance. Thank you, Senator. Please read the ordinance by title.
An ordinance to the council of the city of Fairmont providing for modularized purchase of a certain part of his real estate situated in the city of Fairmont, Marion County, West Virginia, Part Lot 11, Monroe Street, Block 8, Lot 13, 15, Moore Your Way, Lot 31, 32, Adele Street, Lot 22, Robinson Street, Block 6, Lots 9 and 10, Cliff Avenue. From the state of West Virginia Deputy Commissioner of Delinquent and Non-Interlands, as a result of nonpayment of the real estate taxes, gravitation.
Thank you. Any discussion? Clerk, please read the ordinance by synopsis.
An ordinance providing for amendment to the city of Fairmont's 2019-2020 annual budget general fund. This ordinance provides for a general fund budget revision for the 2019-2020 annual budget. This revision will be the third revision for this current fiscal year.
All in favor of setting a public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The public hearing will be set for November 26. Gen item number three, the introduction, first reading, and to set a public hearing for an ordinance, is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Thank you. The clerk, please read the ordinance by synopsis.
An ordinance to the council of the city of Fairmont amending and supplementing ordinance number 1832 duly adopted September 10, 2019.
Motion carries, the public hearing will be set for November 26. Agenda item number three, the introduction, first reading, and to set a public hearing for an ordinance. Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second. Would the clerk, please read the ordinance by synopsis.
An ordinance to the Council of the City of Fairmont amending and supplementing ordinance number 1832, duly adopted September 10, 2019, which ordinance provides for the city of Fairmont's current pay plan and list of occupational classes for all class titles and employees to accommodate changes to the rules governing overtime obligations under the Federal Fair Labor Standards Act. By this proposed ordinance, the Council for the City of Fairmont provides for certain modifications to the city's existing pay plan, which was adopted by ordinance 1832. The following proposed modifications are necessary to accommodate certain changes to the rules governing overtime obligations under the Federal Fair Labor Standards Act, FLSA, which changes are effective January 1, 2020. Reclassifying the positions of office manager and purchasing coordinator from non-represented exempt employees to non-represented, non-exempt employees, and providing for a base increase for the position of maintenance superintendent to maintain its status of non-represented exempt position under the Fair Labor Standards Act.
Thank you. All in favor of setting a public hearing, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, the public hearing will be set for November 26. Agenda item number four, the introduction, first reading, and to set a public hearing for an ordinance. Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Would the clerk, please read the ordinance by synopsis.
An ordinance to the Council of the City of Fairmont providing for and authorizing the purchase of a certain parcel of real estate situated in the city of Fairmont, Fairmont District, Marion County, namely Lots 96, 97, Ogden Avenue, Tax Map 03-34, Parcel 296, from the State of West Virginia, Deputy Commissioner of Delinquent and Non-Interred Lands as a result of the non-payment of real estate taxes ratification. By this proposed ordinance, the Council for the City of Fairmont provides for and authorizes the purchase of the real estate described in the ordinance title from the State of West Virginia, Deputy Commissioner of Delinquent and Non-Interred Lands. The deputy commissioner offered the property for sale as a result of non-payment of real estate taxes due thereon. The city's bid was accepted on October 28, 2019. The purchase will serve to provide for the abatement of dilapidated abandoned and vacant structures. The purchase is subject to the right of redemption by the title holders. In addition, by this proposed ordinance, the Council for the City of Fairmont ratifies, confirms, and approves all actions taken and furthered and then transactions contemplated by this ordinance, which may occur prior to the ordinance's effective date.
Thank you. All in favor of setting a public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, the public hearing will be set for November 26. Agenda item number five, the introduction, first reading, and to set a public hearing for an ordinance. Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second. Would the clerk, please read the ordinance by synopsis.
An ordinance to the Council of the City of Fairmont providing for the designation and naming of the certain streets or roadways situated in the Pleasant View Homes subdivision situated in the city of Fairmont, Fairmont District, Marion County, and identified as Windsor Drive, Pleasant Lane, Windmill Street, and Chaplain Circle on the plaque prepared by Chadron Engineering entitled Pleasant View Homes dated October 12, 2018, dedication. This proposed ordinance provides for the naming, designation, and dedication of certain streets or roadways situated within the Pleasant View Homes subdivision as Windsor Drive, Pleasant Lane, Windmill Street, and Chaplain Circle. The proposed streets are depicted on the plaque attached to and made a part of the ordinance. The request to name the aforementioned streets was made by the owner of the subdivision.
Thank you. All in favor of setting a public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, the public hearing is also set for November 26. Agenda item number six, the introduction, first reading, and to set a public hearing for an ordinance. Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Would the clerk, please read the ordinance by synopsis.
An ordinance amending and supplementing the provisions of ordinance number 1696, codified as Part 1 Administrative Code, Chapter 7 Boards, Commissions, and Authorities, Article 171 Parking Authority, Section .08 Rates of the Fairmont City Code to increase rates for daily vehicular parking from $1.50 to $2.00 per day and to establish rates for vehicular parking on certain parking lots situated on Parcel 24 of Marion County Tax Map 03-01, commonly referred to as the OIC lot. By this proposed ordinance, the Council for the City of Fairmont provides for changes in the existing parking rate structure of the city of Fairmont as follows. An increase from $1.50 to $2.00 per day for vehicular parking space for the parking lots and facilities identified in Sections 2, 3, and 5, commonly referred to as the mid-city parking lot, the old armory lot, and the ace exterminator lot. Establishment of the, of rates for the parking lot or facility identified in Section 7, commonly referred to as the OIC lot, at $0.50 per hour if paid by the hour, and $2.00 per day if paid by the day. The changes were recommended by the City of Fairmont's Parking Authority following the authorities' meeting on October 16, 2019.
Thank you. All in favor of setting a public hearing, say aye. Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries. No.
I do not want to set the public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Motion carries, set the public hearing for November 26. Pursuant to West Virginia Code 6-9A429 and City Charter Section 2.11a3, to consider matters involving or affecting the purchase, sale, conveyance, or at least of real property, I move that we go into executive session. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? To executive session at 8:04.